Gracias a todos por venir. Mi nombre es Mike Proci, soy de Transition Framingham. Seré uno de los co-moderadores de esta noche.
Y soy Amy Fualca, de Sustainable Framingham. Como dijo Mike, gracias a todos por venir esta noche. Estamos muy emocionados de que hayan tomado el tiempo de unirnos esta noche para escuchar los candidatos del Consejo de la Ciudad. Estamos emocionados de escuchar sus pensamientos sobre varios asuntos de sostenibilidad. Tenemos un par de gracias que contar y vamos a entrar en ello. Un muy especial agradecimiento a la representante María Robinson, en la parte de atrás, por venir esta noche. Queríamos dar un agradecimiento al primer parish para nos hospedar esta noche, proporcionar nuestros regalos. Y gracias a los organizadores de este foro, a las personas que proporcionaron los horas necesarias para hacerlo. Esos son de estos grupos: el equipo del primer parish, el equipo de acción climática, Sustainable Framingham, Sierra Club, 350 Metro West y Transition Framingham.
Así que si te preguntas qué hacen todos esos grupos, aquí hay una introducción rápida sobre cada uno de ellos. Sustainable Framingham trabaja en acciones de comunidad como la de la energía solar y las políticas de gobierno de la ciudad de sostenibilidad en Framingham. El equipo de acción climática del primer parish está trabajando para reducir el impacto medioambiental del primer parish y también educar a sus miembros a hacer lo mismo con sus hogares y actividades. La Sierra Club trabaja en legislación estatal y nacional. 350 Metro West trabaja en asuntos municipales en nuestra región y legislación estatal. Y Transition Framingham trabaja en acciones personales como el jardín de comunidad y el café de reparaciones, que se llevará a cabo aquí mañana a las 10:00. Si no sabes qué es el café de reparaciones, puedes traer cualquier cosa de tu casa que necesite reparar o reparar y lo repararemos gratis. Si le das una donación, eso es genial, si no, eso es genial. Si solo quieres venir aquí entre las 10 y las 1:00 mañana y ver el espectáculo que es el café de reparaciones, eso también es aceptable, pero por favor venga, si puede, es entre las 10 y las 1:00 mañana.
Genial. Si te interesa saber más sobre uno de esos grupos, tenemos hojas de inscripción en la mesa atrás aquí en la parte de atrás para Sustainable Framingham y Transition Framingham. Y si te interesa ver más solar en Framingham, también hay una petición allí donde puedes inscribirte. Estamos acompañados esta noche por Axis Framingham, que está grabando este foro y lo haremos públicamente disponible, la grabación en unas dos semanas, como se me dijo. Y lo más importante, nos gustaría agradecer a los candidatos por tomar el tiempo de unirnos esta noche a esta conversación. Así que gracias a todos ustedes.
Bien, ahora vamos al formato de la noche. Primero, escucharemos a Reverendo Tracy Robinson Harris, que va a establecer el tono. Luego, escucharemos a cada candidato que proporcionará una declaración introductoria. Seguidas de estas declaraciones, cada candidato responderá a dos preguntas adicionales. Una de las preguntas vendrá de usted, la audiencia, esta noche, así que por favor asegúrense de escribir cualquier pregunta en los trozos de tres por cinco, si aún no lo han hecho. Nosotros seleccionaremos seis preguntas de audiencia en los próximos 45 minutos o así. Pero cuanto antes se ponga, más fácil será para nosotros. Ahora nos gustaría bienvenida a Reverendo Tracy Robinson Harris.
Buenas noches a todos. Este fin de semana pasado fui una de las millones participando en la lucha global del clima. Una movilización... Woo es correcto. La lucha climática es tanto una movilización como una intervención en el negocio como siempre. Una abordanza que demasiado a menudo guía las políticas, acciones y planes para abordar la crisis climática en la que estamos. El tiempo no está en nuestro lado. El informe de 2018 del panel intergubernamental de la ONU sobre el cambio climático nos dio 12 años para tomar acción para limitar el aumento de la temperatura media global a 1.5 grados Celsius. Basado en el informe de 2018, ahora tenemos 11 años. Pero como escuché el discurso organizado por la lucha climática Greta Thunberg en el suministro del Clima de la ONU esta semana, aprendí esto: Si tenemos una chance del 67% de limitar el aumento de la temperatura global a menos de 1.5 grados Celsius, en el 1 de enero de 2018, teníamos 420 gigatons de carbono dióxido de carbono en nuestro presupuesto de CO2. Ese número es menor hoy. Emiten aproximadamente 42 gigatons de CO2 al año y a los niveles de emisiones actuales, ese presupuesto restante se va en sólo ocho años y medio. Tenemos ocho años y medio para la acción de coraje, valiente, imaginativa, determinada, astuta, hazlo o no. Después de eso, nuestros errores, tanto aquellos del pasado como el de hoy, harán reacciones secundarias irreversibles, más allá del control humano. Greta habló antes, cuando estaba en la ONU, en una reunión del Foro Económico Mundial. Y en ese momento, dijo esto: "Debemos cambiar casi todo en nuestra sociedad actual. Cuanto mayor sea su huella de carbono, más grande será su deber moral. Cuanto mayor sea su plataforma, más grande será su responsabilidad." Continuó diciendo: "Los adultos siguen diciendo que debemos darle esperanza a los jóvenes. No quiero su esperanza. No quiero que seas esperanzoso. Quiero que tepan. Y luego quiero que actúes. Actúa como si tuvieras que hacerlo en una crisis, actúa como si tu casa estuviera en fuego, porque lo es." Hace una semana, hoy, los jóvenes de la lucha climática en todo el mundo gritaron: "Haz tu trabajo", llamando a los líderes mundiales, nacionales, estatales y locales a ser adultos en la habitación, no importa en qué habitación estamos. La crisis climática nos está revelando de manera que nunca imaginábamos la profundidad y complejidad de la red interdependiente de toda la vida. Nuestra interdependencia nos obliga a tomar acción para evitar, mientras podemos, el comienzo de esa reacción secundaria irreversible a errores humanos. Para sobrevivir a esta crisis, necesitamos todos nosotros. Todos nosotros necesitamos todos nosotros para lograrlo. Gracias a todos por estar aquí. Gracias por tomar acción, porque la acción es donde reside la esperanza.
Muchas gracias por esas palabras inspiradoras. Así que vamos a pasar a las declaraciones introductorias de los candidatos. Cada persona recibirá dos minutos y se le ha pedido hablar sobre cómo planifican llevarnos como ciudadanía a abordar el cambio climático. Tendremos relojes aquí arriba y algunos tarjetas para indicar cuánto tiempo queda. ¿Pueden mostrarlos? ¿Qué color era ese y qué significaba? Está bien. Así que verás los 15 segundos y luego tratarás de terminarlo, ese es el gran. Básicamente vamos a ir de izquierda a derecha, así que voy a introducir a cada candidato, decir su distrito cuando vengan, si también pueden decir su nombre y distrito de nuevo, así que todo el mundo esté muy claro de quién es y en qué distrito esperan representar, eso sería genial. Así que primero tenemos a Christine Long, del Distrito 1.
Hola Christine Long, running for council, District 1. Actualmente, soy la presidenta de la Planta de la Comunidad y también trabajo como administradora de activos capitales. Así que los asuntos medioambientales y los asuntos de ahorramiento de energía son extremadamente importantes para mí. Así que como consejera, seguiría con las iniciativas que se iniciaron antes bajo Bob Halpin para evaluar nuestras propiedades, todos nuestros edificios y ver qué medidas eficientes podemos tomar para mejorar toda la eficiencia energética y reducir nuestra huella de carbono. Y eso incluye nuestros activos capitales, en lo que respecta a nuestros vehículos y otros tipos de maquinaria que estamos usando a través de Framingham. Así que supongo que es donde empezaría. En lo que respecta al medioambiente, también me interesa el CPA, en lo que respecta a ahorrar el medioambiente. Especialmente el Distrito 1, estamos perdiendo mucho espacio abierto y el tráfico es un gran problema. Necesitamos encontrar una forma de reducir el tráfico vehícular en Framingham, lo que reduciría la huella de carbono. Así que eso es lo que empezaría. Gracias por escuchar.
Gracias Christine. Siguiente es Joseph Norton, también del Distrito 1.
Soy Joe Norton, espero representar al Distrito 1 en el consejo. Como consejero de la ciudad, mi deber es abrirte, serás responsable de ti. Tengo un historial de trabajo prueba de trabajo abiertamente y cooperativamente con nuestra comunidad, las empresas locales y el gobierno para lograr lo mejor para nuestro vecindario y nuestra ciudad. No soy experto en la sostenibilidad. Repito, no soy experto en la sostenibilidad, pero soy experto en escuchar. Agradeceré tu input hacia la creación de Framingham como una ciudad para el futuro. Con mi experiencia en el real estate, zonaje y planeación, trabajar con el alcalde y el resto del consejo para incentivar el crecimiento inteligente, la sostenibilidad y abordar el cambio climático. Soy únicamente calificado para ser tu consejero de la ciudad. Soy un candidato que construye el consenso para avanzar. He vivido en el Distrito 1 toda mi vida, he criado a mis hijos aquí, he sido criado aquí con mis seis hermanos. Tú eres todos mis amigos y vecinos. Juntos podemos poner Framingham en la frente de la sostenibilidad con nuestros esfuerzos en energía y eficiencia y conservación. Gracias.
Siguiente es Ricky Finlay, Distrito 2.
Gracias. Primero quiero agradecer al Comité de la Sostenibilidad por tenernos esta noche. Un tema muy importante para tener. Para aquellos que no me conocen, mi nombre es Ricky Finlay y estoy running for the District 2 City Council. Espero ser un ex-representante de la ciudad. Soy residente de Saxenville y todavía vivo en el mismo distrito hasta el día de hoy. Tengo una hermosa esposa llamada Tricia y dos hermosos hijos, Olivia y Bobby, que van a las escuelas públicas de Framingham, a las que yo también voy. Me gustaría tomar lo que he aprendido con todos los comités y comisiones que he estado en a lo largo de los años y me gustaría traer lo que he aprendido al Consejo de la Ciudad, traer eso adelante. Creo que tengo un historial de trabajo prueba de trabajo trabajando con los representantes estatales, toda nuestra delegación estatal y nuestra municipalidad, el gobierno común, todos los diferentes comités electorales y comités para reunirse colaborativamente para hacer que Framingham sea un lugar mejor para trabajar, vivir y jugar. Así que creo que tengo un historial de trabajo prueba de trabajo, eso es lo que quiero traer adelante. En lo que respecta a la sostenibilidad y la otra cosa, tenemos que trabajar con nuestro equipo de sostenibilidad, Nada, Sean Lutz, y trabajar. Necesitamos conseguir que el Comité de la Sostenibilidad, para nuestros ciudadanos y probablemente algunos de nuestros empleados, entren en el board. Es muy importante que se haga. Tenemos que llegar a algunas ordenanzas y eso debe hacerse entre el alcalde, el Consejo de la Ciudad y nuestros ciudadanos. Lo que nos gustaría hacer para Framingham, para lograr, lograr esto. También creo que necesitamos, en hacer esto, mirar qué otras ciudades y ciudades están haciendo ahora. Si miras a Nada, han llegado y ya tienen un plan para, creo que es como 2022, no me acuerdo exactamente la fecha, de lo que están preparando para hacer para llegar a cero. Así que creo que podemos mirar qué otras comunidades, qué está pasando por el país. No tenemos que reinventar la rueda, pero ciertamente tenemos que dejar de conseguir esa sostenibilidad y trabajar con nuestro general public, y también tenemos que trabajar para hacer que estas ordenanzas sean efectivas. Gracias.
Gracias Ricky. Siguiente es Caesar Stuart Morales, también del Distrito 2.
Buenas noches, soy Caesar Stuart Morales. Soy un candidato para el Distrito 2 de Consejo de la Ciudad. El cambio climático es una crisis mundial y tiene que ser una prioridad mundial. Creo que Framingham tiene un rol a jugar en abordar la crisis. Es nuestro deber tomar acción ahora. Como consejero, apoyaré las ideas y las iniciativas que nos hacen más cerca de lograr progreso real en esta área. Esto puede incorporarse a nuestro planificación y zonaje, nuestro presupuesto, nuestras ordenanzas locales y a través de la educación pública en general, todos los cuales se encuentran bajo la supervisión del Consejo de la Ciudad. Las acciones hablan más que las palabras. Ya he vivido esto, trabajo en este campo. Como contador público certificado, encontré mi pasión profesional en la industria de la energía. Soy un miembro senior del equipo de contabilidad en una empresa de energía renovable que desarrolla, construye y opera farmas de energía eléctrica y solar a nivel estadounidense. De hecho, he estado trabajando en la energía renovable durante los últimos ocho años. Y las empresas que he trabajado son líderes y pioneros bien respetados en esta industria. Por ejemplo, estoy orgulloso de haber jugado un pequeño rol en lo que se convirtió en el primer farmarón de aire extranjero de Estados Unidos a costa de la costa de Rhode Island. Estoy orgulloso de tener un rol profesional en ayudar a nuestro país a hacer progreso hacia la reducción de su dependencia de combustibles bauxiles. Tengo una red en esta industria y experiencia firsthand. Tengo un título de finanza, un MBA, soy CPA. Puedo comunicarme en cinco idiomas. Servir en la Comisión de Relaciones Humanas de Framingham y en el Board de Financiación de Edward Church en Saxenville. Tengo las habilidades técnicas, las habilidades de la gente y las habilidades de comunicación para hacer el trabajo. Tengo la experiencia que necesitamos en nuestro Consejo de la Ciudad y pido su apoyo en esta elección. Helpo a Framingham a llegar a la victoria. Gracias.
Siguiente es Adam Steiner, Distrito 3.
Gracias. Soy Adam Steiner, tu consejero de la ciudad del Distrito 3, running for reelection. Así que he estado en el Consejo de la Ciudad por casi dos años. Dos años que han sido como un bootcamp para mí, como alguien que es relativamente nuevo al gobierno de la ciudad. No tengo miedo de decir que he aprendido mucho en esos dos años. Y como educador de larga vida, estoy muy cómodo con la idea de aprender de larga vida. dicho esto, la escuela está fuera ahora y hay tres formas concretas que creo que el Consejo de la Ciudad necesita actuar para ayudar a proteger nuestro planeta. La primera es sobre el zonaje, y específicamente el multifamilia y el uso mixto. Estos grandes desarrollos que estamos viendo por todo el país. Creo que en el pasado hemos dicho que sería bueno si tuvieran solar o alternativa. Creo que es hora de cambiar eso y decir: "Si quieres construir multifamilia o uso mixto, debes tener solar o alternativa". El segundo, escuelas y edificios de la ciudad. La escuela más amplia es lista de solar y estoy seguro de que tendremos paneles de solar en ella. Pero creo que desde ahora en adelante deberíamos estar de acuerdo que cualquier edificio de la ciudad que se construya tiene esa energía alternativa desde el principio. No debería ser algo que hagamos después del hecho. Y luego la tercera cosa específica que advocate sería el CPA, para proporcionar fondos para proteger nuestro espacio abierto. Y lo que me gustaría hacer es ver cómo usamos el ingreso de nuestra industria de marihuana para compensar eso para los contribuyentes para que podamos proteger nuestro espacio abierto sin cargar a los contribuyentes con una carga adicional de impuestos. Así que creo que es hora de ser específicos, es hora de mantener a nuestros concejeros de la ciudad y nuestros candidatos responsables. Y esos son tres formas en las que esperaría mover a Framingham adelante. Gracias.
Siguiente es Phil Otobiani, Distrito 6.
Gracias Mike. Buenas noches. Phil Otobiani, running for District 6 of City Council. De hecho, no oponía, lo cual fue una bendición. Escolhi ir a la carrera, Mike Rossi decidió no ir a la carrera y esa es la única razón por la que entré en este partido esta vez. Estoy corriendo para el Distrito 6 porque no puedo profundizar en Framingham y todos sus ciudadanos. Mi esposa Valerie y yo hemos tomado una decisión consciente de criar a nuestra hija Julia aquí. Soy residente de la preciencia 11 del Distrito 6. Nacido y criado en Russell Road, Salamanca, Salamanca. Mis décadas de servicio, liderazgo y experiencia me hacen únicamente calificado para servir en el Distrito 6. Nuestra ciudad necesita valorar toda la entrada y respetar los diferentes puntos de vista para poder comprender completamente todos los problemas situados ante ella. Como consejero del Distrito, invitaré a la participación de nuestros residentes, lo que es crítico para crear el consenso mientras avanzamos. Ahora vamos a ir a tu tema, el tema que nos rodea hoy, la sostenibilidad. Una forma, en el board de zonaje, trabajamos con el constructor de esos nuevos apartamentos. Queríamos que la NWRTA pudiese poner un autobús allí y Roy McDowell hizo eso. El tráfico en Framingham es ludicrous, ir de un extremo al otro toma 35 minutos. Tenemos un gran problema de tráfico. Nuestros edificios, estábamos comprando solar de David Appleblom en Waverly Street. Elejimos esa farmarilla solar. Creo que hay un problema allí, no estamos comprando nuestra energía de él. Pero es algo que los negocios querrían hacer, muchos negocios. Veo a Mr. Cottab allí, él hace algo de trabajo con solar. Estamos tratando de hacer dos edificios. Los restaurantes hoy, uno de los mayores costos de funcionar. Tenemos dos clientes en los restaurantes, enormes gastos eléctricos y gastos de utilidad. Y estamos tratando de hacer solar en ambos de esos edificios. Y está llegando a la frente. Automóviles inteligentes. La ciudad de Framingham está haciendo un buen trabajo, pero podemos hacer un trabajo mejor. Jimmy Palini comenzó cuando estaba en la reunión de la ciudad, retrofitizando bulbos eficientes de energía, haciendo esto. Pero podemos hacer mucho más. El CPA es algo que necesitamos mirar. Lo hicimos hace mucho tiempo, no pasó por los residentes. Es algo que el Consejo de la Ciudad necesita adoptar. El cuadrante norte, ustedes venlo, todo se está llevando uno a la vez. Hay una señora que conoce en Edmonds Road, está vendiendo porque no le gusta la farmarilla de cultivo que viene a la calle. Solo tenemos muchas cosas pasando y necesitamos trabajar juntos para hacer que estas cosas se hagan. Gracias.
Gracias Phil. Siguiente es George King at large. ¿Les gusta eso?
Sí, bueno, de todos modos, siempre feliz de ser el par de broma para iniciar la noche. De todos modos, aprecio la oportunidad de venir aquí esta noche. Es un foro interesante porque creo que a menudo cuando vamos a los foros estamos hablando de cosas del gobierno que esperamos saber más de que todo el mundo. Aquí creo que es una gran oportunidad para nosotros aprender de ustedes, de sus preguntas y de sus ideas esta noche y lo aprecio. La sostenibilidad es algo que también no soy experto en el tema en general, pero creo que es algo que es importante para todos nosotros. Y creo que en los primeros años en el Consejo hemos hecho algunos progresos en ello. Y a través de mi carrera profesional y mi experiencia en el Consejo, parece que estas cosas para mí funcionan mejor cuando podemos hacerlas una situación de ganancia-ganancia. En otras palabras, si podemos encontrar una abordanza de sostenibilidad que save dinero, siempre he querido salvar dinero, pero si podemos salvar dinero a través de una abordanza de sostenibilidad, soluciona dos problemas al mismo. Así que cualquier vez que encuentres esos tipos de oportunidades de ganancia-ganancia. Creo que lo encontramos un poco, con suerte lo encontramos, en lo que acaba de mencionar, la farmarilla, la farmarilla de Eastlake en Edmonds Road. Ahora, donde estás en la legalización de marihuana en Massachusetts, es donde está, es legal, no creo que vaya a cambiar. Así que nuestro zonaje ahora permite la cultivación de distritos como éstos. Así que hemos encontrado una forma, creo, de salvar esa farmarilla, de salvar ese espacio abierto a no costo de la ciudad. Hace dos años que comenzamos el Consejo de la Ciudad, parecía que iba a ser, si lo vamos a salvar, iba a haber un costo para los contribuyentes. Aquí hemos podido usar nuestro zonaje y usar la oportunidad que vino a través de la ciudad para aumentar el ingreso, salvar el espacio abierto. Para mí, no sé, nuevamente, todo eso, lo bueno es que es en el camino de arriba, no debería preocupar a nadie demasiado. ¿Por qué no podemos usar áreas como éstas de paneles de solar y esos tipos de cosas también? Que no van a ser visibles, que pueden salvar mucho espacio verde alrededor de ellos, pero también nos dan la energía sostenible que todos sabemos obtener de solar. Así que cualquier capacidad de tener situaciones de ganancia-ganancia en estos tipos de iniciativas, creo que hace el progreso mucho más rápido que lo que debería ser. Y espero esas oportunidades si puedo servir de nuevo en el próximo Consejo de la Ciudad. Muchas gracias.
Gracias Roy. Siguiente, Janet Lambruno, también at large.
Bueno, hola. No me entiendo la broma. Para aquellos que no me conocen, mi nombre es Janet Lambruno y vivo en Framingham. Nací en Saxenville, residente de larga vida donde mi madre era profesora en Framingham. Y sirvió en el Board de Trasados de Framingham con George King cuando tenía 18 años. Mi padre, Ed, estaba en el comité escolar y también sirvió en la Comisión de Conservación durante años como presidenta. Cuando crecimos, nos dijeron que teníamos que devolver a nuestra comunidad. Así que cuando crecí, escogimos Framingham, mi esposo John y yo escogimos Framingham para crecer nuestra familia, construir nuestras raíces. Y tenía tres hijos, todos viven en Knobscott, Anthony, Nick y Alex, y mi esposo John. Cuando mis hijos se hicieron mayor, los entrené a través de los programas y luego terminé siendo uno de los comisiones en Framingham Baseball. Y cuando se hicieron mayor, me involucré en el gobierno de la ciudad, creo que cuando estaban tratando de construir una propiedad en el parque en nuestro patio. Así que me uní a la reunión de la ciudad donde serví durante unos 14 años y actualmente sirvo como la apuntada al asesor del gobernador en la Autoridad de Alquiler de Framingham. Así que, ¿por qué querría que fuera al Consejo de la Ciudad?, todo el mundo me dice. Y una de las cosas que he hecho es que trabajo realmente bien a través del board con mucha gente. Serví en la reunión de la ciudad con mucha gente en esta sala y creo que tenemos muchas ideas realmente buenas. Cuando comencé a mirar el foro y vi algunas de las preguntas, una de las cosas que realmente me sorprendió fue la cantidad de cosas que otras ciudades y comunidades están haciendo, pero que no hacemos. Y realmente me gustaría ser, porque somos inteligentes, tenemos personas super inteligentes aquí. Ustedes son geniales, tienen ideas geniales, pero nunca parece mover la pelota hacia el campo. Y si me electo como uno de tus consejeros de la ciudad, te diré que escucharé a la gente. Y tengo que parar ahora, pero gracias.
Gracias Janet. Siguiente es Gloria Pasqual, también corriendo para la Junta de alto.
Y soy muy pequeña. Buenas noches a todos, soy Gloria Pasqual, candidata para el consejero de la ciudad en la Junta de alto. 我现在是 Framingham School Committee's Vice Chair and Hospital Administrator for UMass Memorial. Muchas gracias por darnos la oportunidad esta noche para discutir este tema muy importante. En 2017, Framingham votó por una forma de gobierno de la ciudad para tomar decisiones de una manera más temprana. Todos hemos visto cómo la política puede detener las cosas. Estoy comprometida con poner el progreso sobre la política, porque temas críticos como la crisis climática simplemente no pueden esperar. Deberíamos dar un ejemplo para los demás. Me encanta este signo porque suma todo. No hay planeta B. Y es exactamente por eso que Framingham debe ir verde. No podemos esperar más. Comencemos con las cosas que podemos cambiar ahora. Podemos abordar los desafíos de reciclar proactivamente y revisar las ordenanzas de los bolsillos de plástico. Deberíamos reunirnos con los líderes de negocios para encontrar soluciones que funcionen para todos nosotros. Advocaré un comité de ciudadanos y ciudadanos permanente para enfocarse en el medioambiente y una política solar que requiera paneles de solar en edificios municipales. Apoyaré una política para introducir vehículos de alta gama en la fleet municipal. Mantendré a las empresas responsables por limpiar y repurificar sitios que han contaminado. Propongo una ordenanza para eliminar el uso de materiales no reciclables como el styrofoam, que se usa en abundancia en nuestras escuelas. Puedes contar conmigo para hacer el trabajo. Veo las cosas a través y mantengo a la gente informada. Tengo un título de máster en sociología aplicada de la Universidad de Massachusetts Boston y un certificado de graduación de la Universidad de Boston. Soy el único candidato en la Junta de alto viviendo en el sur de la Ruta 9 y que habla bien español. Traigo a la gente en conjunto en asuntos. Sería honrado representar a todos ustedes y poner sus ideas y voces a trabajar para Framingham. Agradecería mucho su apoyo y pediré uno de tus votos para el consejero de la ciudad en la Junta de alto el 5 de noviembre. Muchas gracias.
Siguiente, Naval Alexander, Distrito 5.
Gracias Gloria. Hola a todos y gracias por venir y gracias a Green Framingham por hospedar este foro muy importante. Gracias al público por estar aquí. Soy Naval Alexander, candidato para el Consejo de la Ciudad del Distrito 5. Y solo un poco de fondo profundo sobre mí, soy retirado del ejército, 25 años de servicio. Y volví originalmente de aquí, dejé por unos 18 años para ir a la universidad, hacer mi servicio y luego volví aquí en 2011. Así que no solo es solo casa, sino que sentí que Framingham siempre ha sido el fundamento de mi vida adulta. Muchas cosas que he aprendido en la escuela, en Framingham, me tomé conmigo en mi vida adulta hacia Texas. Y he criado a mis dos hijos que ahora casi han ido, uno ha ido, el otro casi ha ido a la escuela secundaria. Pero los asuntos medioambientales siempre han sido muy importantes para mí. He enseñado eso a mis hijos, también enseño eso como profesor sustituto en las tres ciudades en las que enseño. Ha sido siempre una gran parte de mi vida. Y también solo quería traer mi experiencia relevante y mi pasión para resolver los problemas que tenemos en la arena ambiental. Y realmente necesitamos ser serios y ser realmente serios rápidamente sobre las cosas que deben hacerse en esta comunidad. Y realmente necesitamos ser el líder en lugar de el seguidor en esta arena. Uno de mis propuestas es que nos convierta en acuerdos municipales.
Gracias Naval.
Oh, lo siento. Necesitas ver el parque. Muchas gracias.
Siguiente es Robert Case, también del Distrito 5.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Robert Case y estoy corriendo por la silla del Consejo de la Ciudad del Distrito 5. Mi esposo y yo escogimos mudarnos a Framingham hace siete años para empezar nuestra familia. Y desde entonces hemos adoptado a nuestros tres hijos a través de la prestación de cuidado de Massachusetts y todos ellos asisten a las escuelas públicas de Framingham. Enseñamos a nuestros hijos, como me enseñó mi madre, que siempre debes dejar las cosas mejores. better than you found them. This lesson is especially important when it comes to the future of our city and making Framingham greener. We have an urgent need to make Framingham and our planet livable for future generations. Working on the city council will give me the opportunity to create strong sustainability programs to reduce Framingham's carbon footprint, as well as beautify our city by preserving our open spaces. I've worked for an international asset management firm for over 12 years, evaluating returns on investment over time. We must invest in making Framingham greener now, and also in educating our residents on how we can all make a difference. We have a sustainability coordinator, but that's not enough. The city council must work with the mayor to create a permanent citizens' environmental committee to keep Framingham accountable. Passing feel-good resolutions and then doing nothing is too common, and it's no longer acceptable. As chair of the Strategic Initiatives and Financial Oversight Committee, I'm working on a long-range vision for Framingham. Our city strategic plan that is due next year must include specific steps to reduce our consumption of energy and must explore more alternative and non-fossil fuel sources to power the work of our municipal government. With everything we have to work with and the expertise and the passion of people like you who are here tonight, we must be an example, and we can and should be a role model for other communities when it comes to protecting our environment. The time to do something together to save our city and our planet is now, so I ask for your vote on November 5th. Thank you.
Next up, Bill Lynch, District 7.
Hi, everybody, Bill Lynch, District 7. A little quick bio about me, born and raised in Framingham, been here just about all my life with the exception of a few years when I was little. What I do for work, I'm a mailman, I've been doing that for 20 years, I actually love my job. And within the postal service, I'm also a union steward. I've been a past union president for six years. I love being in the union and being a steward, because I love to help people. It's kind of what I do, I would drop myself crazy if I can help out one person. And being on the city council, I believe, is a lot like that. You're there speaking for people that either can't or don't want to speak for themselves, that don't know how to speak for themselves. You know, I believe in logic, I believe in solving problems by just, you know, sometimes you have to back up and take a look, and instead of being real technical, just be a little bit logical. You know, and I'm happy to come up here tonight, because one of the things that I want to do and I want to present, and sometimes, and I say logic, my wife calls it Lynch logic, because sometimes it doesn't make sense, and I get it, but I have ideas, right? So we hear all the time, we have to work with this, we have to do that, we have to do that, but you don't hear a lot of ideas. So for one example, one of my ideas is bringing electric scooters to at least the downtown portion of Framingham. So this will do several things. This will, this will help the traffic, it will not solve it by any means, it's better for the environment, it will bring revenue into the city. So my wife says, "You don't even have a scooter, what the heck kind of idea is this?" So I went out and bought a scooter. So now when I go door-to-door in my neighborhood every night of the week for two hours, I'm on my electric scooter, and they make them for bad guys. I sit on it, I mean, and it's fantastic, and it's just a great, I know I look foolish, but you know what? It's a fantastic thing to do. So I believe in practicing what I preach, and I'm gonna preach to shut up now.
Thank you, Bill. Next up is Margaret Shepherd, also District 7.
Good evening, thank you for the organizers, and thank you for being here and listening to us. My name is Margaret Shepherd, I'm a city council for, city, city council for District 7, and the first Brazilian-American to be elected as city council in the United States, and actually, I believe the first deaf person to serve in Framingham government, I never heard about any other deaf person there. So I've been breaking a lot of what I call glass walls, because we don't realize they exist, and that's part of my proposal as a city council, we should continue to be breaking those walls, and the way I'm doing is like, make them visible. I am a proof that those walls are visible, and I'm breaking them. If I can do that, others can do that as well. I believe the job of a city council, the main job, is to create legislation, to approve legislation that will protect and regulate our city, but we also are ambassador for the city. We are the beacon for every resident, they look up to us and they are learning from us. So what we do in life, the way we connect to people, and with every day, business that we do, that's what will change the behavior. Right now, those who have no access to open air, who have no access to food without poison, who have no access to a better quality of life, it's very difficult for them to understand what we are saying and why we are asking them to approve legislation that will require them to spend more money. So my goal is to educate these people, and one thing I can promise you, I will listen to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Mario Alvarez, District 8.
Good evening, since I have limited time, please visit www.marioporframingham.com to get info about me and my candidacy. Climate change is real. Framingham residents have long expressed a commitment to taking actions in our community to be prepared. We know what our priorities should be, but we have struggled to move these items to be an integrated philosophy in our public policy, to have the most meaningful impact for today and future. We have approached sustainability in a piecemeal method rather than acting with purpose and executing a strategy. Holding our elected officials accountable for action is the key. Today, we have the opportunity to talk about specific initiatives and policies being utilized in sustainability practices, but I want us to be honest, that those individual items will fail or fall short of their goal without our leadership commitment to a citywide integrated value system around sustainability. If we don't place that as a key piece of our value, then the impact would be lessened. As a longtime Framingham resident, I wish to thank Sustainable Framingham and Church for hosting such an important forum. Sustainability practices are widely supported by many, but only achieve meaningful adaptation when a community places its value into action and holds its leaders accountable. Framingham today falls into the category of endorsing sustainability, but our leaders are hobbling our momentum by not ensuring a strategy, resources through establishing and empowering a sustainability commission. We are looking at individual pain points such as traffic, flooding, plastic bags, trucks, individually, instead of integrating these items into a holistic strategy across the city to ensure meaningful progress for our communities. The smaller neighboring towns are fully committed and taking action, we're not. This past week, with Greta Thunberg admonished the world, when Greta Thunberg admonished the world leaders of the UN, she was also speaking to our local government and our local leaders. Thank you.
Thank you, Mario. Next up, John Stephanini, District 8.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is John Stephanini, I'm running for council in District 8. My wife Cecilia and I live on Bethany Road with our two girls, and like many of you, we practice in our daily lives aggressive strategies to reduce, recycle, and repurpose our goods and belongings. I drive an electric vehicle, we compost, we keep bees, we grow vegetables. We believe, we as a community believe, so why is it, eight years ago, town meeting voted to make Framingham green, and we're no closer today than we were eight years ago? Lots of great ideas up here today, and I embrace them all plus a bunch more. What do we need to do as a community? We need to do two things, and as a city council, I will do what I've done my entire professional and political career. Build consensus amongst decision-makers. I'll work with all of the decision-makers in City Hall to do two things. The first, we have to define a bodacious achievable goal. We need to be 100% sustainable energy in Framingham by 2025, and we need to be net zero by 2035, period. And then we need to pass an ordinance that sets up a committee, not of just citizens, it needs to be a committee chaired by the mayor, with the city council, the school committee, the superintendent, and all of our leaders. We just applied for a grant that we heralded that replaces some boiler parts in HVAC while Ashland, Hollis, and Amherst, Northampton are doing innovative things with charging stations and CNG to their fleets and solar power on buildings. Why aren't we doing these things? Instead, we're focusing our energy on replacing light bulbs. We need to do that, but we need to do so much more. We do it by building consensus, holding our leaders accountable by putting them at the table so they can't go like this. If elected, I will do that. Thank you, John.
Last, but certainly not least, Tracy Bryant, District 9.
Hi. As you said, my name is Tracy Bryant, I'm running for the District 9 city council seat. I am currently the school committee member of the school committee for District 9 also. And I just want to say that I am by no means an expert on, I hate to say climate change, because they think that that's less scary than saying global warming, but one, I want to remind people that it is global warming, and it is scary, and, but I am a concerned citizen, because global warming is the issue of our time, it is the most important issue, it is the issue that unifies all of us. It will affect the whole planet, it's no longer a case of what kind of planet will we leave our children and our grandchildren, it's now so urgent that it is what kind of planet will we have to live on in 12 years? Will it be, will it be sustainable at all? The scientists say we have only 12 years to clean it up, which means that we shouldn't have been cleaning it up 50 years ago, we should have started. So as a city councillor, I would work vigorously and ceaselessly to ensure that we do use renewable energy, that we do become, you know, go down to net zero in how we operate, that we build green and build clean, that, we have to do it on a bigger level, and the transportation of Framingham, which we're talking about increasing, and we do need to, but we need to make sure that that's green. Every step that we take from here on in, and actually before we should have, needs to have the requirement that it is green, that it is sustainable, that it is going to be good for the, for the planet and good for Framingham, and I intend to see that happens. It will take legislation and education, education of the people, and then we need to create ordinances in Framingham and work on the state level and also at the federal level. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all candidates for taking the time to provide such thoughtful introductory statements. If we can do everything that you guys said you were gonna do, will be a good start. So we're gonna go into the prepared questions first. We have two sets of questions tonight, oh yeah, thank you, Amy, for the visual reminder. We have two sets of questions, the questions that were prepared ahead of time by Sustainable Framingham, and the second set of questions that will be read later, which are the questions that have been submitted tonight. If you want to submit a question and haven't done so yet, you have exactly two minutes to do so. So we're gonna start with the questions that were prepared by Sustainable Framingham. Basically, there are six questions, and each of the members up here has been assigned a group number or randomly selected a group number. All questions have been emailed to the candidates in advance, so the set of questions they have seen and have hopefully had a chance to prepare for. Candidates received a random number, 1 through 5, upon arrival, with at-large candidates being grouped together. Each of the six groups will be composed of either two, what? Garbling, does that sound better? I don't know what I did differently. Each of the six groups will be composed of two or three candidates. Because we have so many candidates and only so much time, each group will only answer one of the previously prepared questions. The questions will be different for each group. That means that obviously not all candidates will answer all questions. The question that each group will be asked has been determined randomly. Each candidate will later get to answer a question that has been submitted tonight, as we said before. Each member of the group will only have 45 seconds to answer the question. We chose this time because we wanted people to get to the point, and we wanted you guys to get home at a reasonable hour on a Friday night. I will, as the moderator, be a little bit lenient, if the stop sign goes up and it sounds like you're finishing up, I will let you finish, if you're starting a new thought, I will cut you off. Please get to the point. So you will have the same visual cues for 15 seconds remaining and stop. You don't have a number? Amy's coming right now. Does anybody else not have a number?
We were told that, I was told that largely.
Yeah, you guys are a group on your own.
Well, I have a number, but I don't have a number to you.
So, hey, Amy, somebody at-large got a number, but are they not supposed to have a number?
No.
Okay.
Give me three.
Is it a group?
No.
Oh, okay. Caesar's here.
We're on clear on that.
So we're on clear, so you have one number.
You have one number. So in a minute, I'm gonna call up Group 1, and each of the people in Group 1 is gonna answer the first question. So you, each group will answer one question individually for 45 seconds. Does that make sense? All right. What'd you say? That's still gonna bind. Okay, so basically, you will have the same timing cues as before, 15 seconds, should start wrapping it up. Again, when the stop sign comes up, if you sound like you're finishing up, I will let you finish. And would anyone who is in Group 1 please stand up? So we're just gonna go, we're gonna go in reverse order, so Naval's gonna go and answer question one first, and then Caesar's gonna answer it second. You guys got it? All right, Naval, can you step up to the microphone, please? And Caesar, please pay attention, because I will not repeat the question. You only have to remember it for 45 seconds, it's not that hard. All right, here we go. Ready, Naval?
The mic is not right.
Hello.
Could you go over to this mic?
I can do that, hold on.
Thank you. Mike broke the mic.
All right. Several Massachusetts municipalities are considering new development to be built to net zero energy use. Current new developments in Framingham are being built without the elements required to reach net zero, including solar, electricity generation, and deep energy efficiency. How would you propose to support sustainable design in large new developments?
Well, thank you for the question, Mike, and I'm up first. So my answer to that is that we, I believe we need to have a temporary moratorium on apartment buildings and large developments, first of all, because we need to sit and figure out how this is gonna affect our environment, how to integrate transportation, recycling, city services, all the like. So I believe that would be the first thing right off the bat. We need also to be robust in trying to give incentives for people to save and for developers to come here and build, so municipal aggregate agreements is one, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Naval.
The point that I was trying to make before I got stopped there.
Get to the point. Caesar, so is everyone else ready for the 45 seconds? All right. Caesar, how would you propose to support sustainable design in large new developments?
Caesar Stormarells, District 2, candidate for city council. I would absolutely be in favor of having a requirement for large new developments to have to build using a zero, a net zero energy use standard. I think it's really important, it's the best time to do, to do that in a process in a building's lifecycle, is right at the beginning. It's very difficult to retrofit a unit and very expensive and cost prohibitive, and so it's, it's pretty clear to me that we need to follow what other communities have done and make that a requirement for any large new developments.
Perfect, thank you. If you have group number two, or if you have the number two, can you please stand up? All right, so we're gonna start at this end with Tracy. Framingham residents are concerned about traffic congestion. How would you support requiring or incentivizing new developments and large employers to provide shuttle services to public transportation sites like the Framingham commuter rail stop?
Well, no one is more concerned about it than I am, so, about the traffic congestion. No one wants to sit in traffic, and it just impedes the efficient functioning of the No one wants to sit in traffic, and it just impedes the efficient functioning of the city and also the quality of life. So how I would help it... I do believe in the incentives and all that, and encourage that through ordinances and how in putting it, making it part of the bidding process, some of the requirements. But I think that it's a much larger problem that we need to address. I think we need a committee to get on it now of experts and stakeholders to address it now. Most of the problem is not so much people trying to get to the commuter rail. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. I think Margaret is up next.
I believe we need to lead by example. We have the Framingham structure. We have a lot of problems downtown, so why not create a lot of parking laws someplace for the employers and have the city have a shuttle bus for the employers and take out the traffic away from downtown? That would be one example. I would not create, as right now, a condition, but I would incent our employers to create the form of transportation to avoid traffic. But I'm not sure if the majority of the employers in Framingham take the train. So we need to do that study for us. I don't want to come here and promise something that probably is not feasible at the moment.
Thank you, Margaret. Next up is Joe Orton, District One.
There isn't anybody that lives in Framingham that doesn't see we have a traffic issue. The employers such as Bose and the hospital, some of these already have shuttles that go to the commuter rail. But that's not the only places people go to in Framingham. So I think that we need to try to expand those programs by increasing the Metro West regional transit system. So that's one part of doing it, maybe integrating with those company programs. The second is, in the future, to create villages where we live, play, and work. You know, that's something that's been used in a lot of documents you see, but really, if you don't, if you can walk to work, walk to where you hang out, and then walk to home, you don't need to be driving all over the city. So I think we need to rethink the way we design our cities in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Group Three. So we only had one member of Group Three? Totally fine. This is what happens when you make things random. Question Three. Are you ready, Robert? I am ready. Framingham goes out to bid to purchase electricity for use by city facilities. What do you think would be the benefits of the city also going out to bid for electricity on behalf of its residents and small businesses? This is a community aggregation agreement. This is what Framingham should have done a long time ago. When a town meeting passed that resolution for 100% renewable energy, this is what could have led us to that. Ashland, Natick, Sudbury, all the surrounding towns around us all have options up to 100% renewable energy for each of their residents, and that's why it's so important for us. This will also allow us, as we participate, to expand that green energy market, to make it bigger, to make it more profitable for people to buy and sell green energy, and increase the green energy in the region, so everyone can take part of this. And it just continues to grow and grow and build. And that's something that we need to focus on here in Framingham, and the sustainability coordinator needs to work on a community aggregation agreement now. Thank you. Thank you.
Ricky ended up with six, number six, so you may want to swap him into one.
Want to just throw him into three? Ricky, ready? So we only have one person answering. So Ricky, I'll reread the question since you weren't really prepared at this. Framingham goes out to bid to purchase electricity for use by city facilities. What do you think would be the benefits of the city also going out to bid for electricity on behalf of its residents and small businesses?
Thank you. I think that it can be beneficial to our community. The only problem, as we know, is rates go up and down. It might be hard to get all our homeowners on board because of now the fluctuating rates that all these various companies offer from year to year. We have to really take a look at that, make sure that there's some sort of clause that the homeowners that get into it, if rates go up at a higher rate, they also need to look to be able to get out and get the best rate for them. So it can be achievable. It's being done in other cities and communities. Once again, we have to work together. We have to do our research to make sure that when we enter into these agreements, that we take care of our homeowners that have the opportunity to get out of it if they do not want to go at the higher rate at the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ricky. Group Four, stand up, please. Okay, so we're going to go with Bill first. Bill, you ready for this question?
Ready.
What would you propose the city of Framingham do to help all Framingham residents, in particular, low-income residents, have access to energy efficiency and renewable energy programs?
So, well, the first thing Framingham can do is actually do something. You know, I mean it. It's all about communication. So if I get something from, if there's something in City Hall saying, oh, look, there's a deal on solar, look how good the solar is, and I think to myself, there's not one city building in Framingham that's city-owned with solar on it. So why am I going to listen to you? Framingham, and we've heard from John and Mr. Case, that the surrounding communities are doing stuff. Framingham needs to do things. They need work, they need to do it, and then they've got to start with the communication, whether it be at the Palom Rec Department, you know, tables out here on, you know, whenever there's a fair. But first and foremost, Framingham has to get on the ball, and they actually have to practice what they preach, and they have to do it.
Thank you, Bill. Next up, Adam Steiner, District Three.
One thing to do is to get the city to start aggregating solar energy in alternative forms so that every person has the choice whether to purchase from ever source or from that other source that's out there. I already mentioned the idea of requiring that these multifamily complexes have solar on top of them. Another issue that I would bring up, you know, my colleague Trudy Grove has been working real hard to make the plastic bag ban work right. The city should be partnering with businesses to provide reusable bags for free everywhere. Like, I go shopping every week, and I always forget my reusable bags. I know you were doing it, too. They should be there and ready for people to take at no cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Last up in Group Four is Christine Long, District One.
Now we have to come down. So, funny thing, I work for Affordable Housing, and this is what I do at work. So I'm a grant writer, and I pull in money for affordable housing units, because if you're speaking to low-income people, the landlord, Newton Housing, who I work for, is the landlord. We have 13 development sites, and this year I pulled in $1.2 million in grant money for energy-efficient hot water heating system Mr. Stephanini had talked about earlier, mini splits, that's on another program, I pulled in another $500,000 on that. And for those type of units, the, I would assume, Framingham Housing Authority probably does that, Ms. Liam Bruno would know about that. But as far as the individual homeowners, I believe communication is the issue, and if they are affordable or low-income housing, chances are you'd have to work with the landlords to be able to promote that. But there are solutions for that, and there is money.
Thank you. Next up, Group Five, please stand up. John just went for the mic. John, you ready for the question? Who else was in Group Five? That was Mario and Phil. Excellent. You guys listening? Please provide an example of a green infrastructure project that you will support that would increase Framingham's climate resilience and that would potentially be eligible for the new state Green Works Infrastructure Program.
Well, given the fact that we do nothing, that would be just about everything. Solar cars, solar, I mean, electric vehicles, solar panels, CNG on our fleets, community composting, community gardens, collective purchasing so that we can, everyone can get the same invest rates that everybody else does as Greenfield does. We've got to look at reuse reduction issues. I think we've got to look at banning not just plastic bags. We've got to look bigger and broader than that in terms of how we deal with those kinds of issues. I think we need to look at retrofitting. Our contracts are coming up on our school buildings, as Mr. Finley mentioned. Those are an opportunity for us to be able to retrofit those buildings. So the list is long. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next up, Mario Alvarez, District Eight.
So there are a few top items for Green Works Infrastructure Program that Framingham needs to capitalize on in a strategy moving forward. Resilience against the impact of climate change should be a top priority, as the impact that associated costs by not acting adequately are significant. A few of our top priorities based on our city today would be the following: stormwater compliance, creation of a mini-grid, converting non-emergency vehicles into electric vehicles, and integration of a 21st century fleet management system leveraging technology for fuel optimization, a sustainability coordinator to drive an action of implemented policies and decisions, prioritizing community solar farm and the acquisition of the land for it. As far as the largest issue in Framingham is failing execution of key sustainability policy and needs to accelerate this in our community. We cannot allow the political gridlock to impede our progress. We have $1.3 billion we can get.
Thank you, Mario. Phil Adubiani, District Six, same question.
Thank you. Mario just touched on it. The state passed a $1.3 billion bill. They're giving out $100 million a year. If Framingham just took the buildings that they own and put solar on the buildings, and they could bundle it and sell it to the people and use it on their own buildings. They buy, they bought it up until a year ago, a guy named Dave Applebaum. He put a solar farm and waved the street in behind Caniglia Row Industries, and instead of working with him in the city, proactively doing the right thing, next thing you know, he's in a battle with the city over personal property tax because they're saying it's personal property. So they're in a huge fight. So on one hand, we're trying to help people and get this stuff going; on the other hand, we're going to tax them and make it not worth their while to do. It makes no sense. More electric vehicles in the fleet, and our sustainability coordinator can organize these and do these things, and the municipal microgrids and all those things can be covered under that grant money at $100 million a year. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Our last group is Group Six. It is the three-at-large council candidates. They will answer question number six. We'll start with Gloria Pasqual. Mic adjustment. There we go. I know how this works. You ready?
Ready.
How can we get to having a new citizen advisory committee to support and guide the city's efforts to address environmental and sustainability issues?
As a city councilor, I would advocate for an ordinance so that we could work with the sustainability coordinator to create a strategic plan in reducing our carbon footprint, educate our community, support Net Zero and Community Preservation Act. And we would bring together all of our community stakeholders and our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question, Janet Manbruno, at-large council candidate.
Okay, this is a great question. It's sort of right up my alley. I've always been a community consensus builder. I think an advisory board would be great. If you, I went through downtown Framingham, and as I went into some of the neighborhoods, I noticed that the amount of recyclable bins were almost nonexistent. And I met with some of the neighbors, and, you know, I see that we have, there are people that they don't even know how to recycle. They're not there. We need to educate, we need to bring people in, we need to expand with the money that we have for the grants that are out there. We have large sections of our community that are being forgotten about. So, thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, same question, George King.
So when it comes to government and government structure, I'm a pragmatist, I think. Like you, Amy?
I am.
Okay. So when it comes to government and government structure, I'm a pragmatist, I think. And we certainly can form a committee, and we should form a committee. But whenever you form a committee in government, you have to make sure you make it a meaningful committee, otherwise the committee just gets lost in the structure of government. So the participation in the committee, who's involved in the committee, what the goals of the committee are, what the timelines in the committee are, have to happen. Committees are formed in government for two reasons. One, those people really want to do something, and one, those people have no desire to do anything whatsoever, and they just form a committee. That committee's never heard of, the committee people want to do something for, you know, is heard from, and it makes a big difference. We've seen examples of both in this municipality over the years, and I think if we're going to do this, we have to make sure we do it right with the goals and objectives and the membership that makes the job happen. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes our lightning round. Thank you, guys, for being prepared and getting it done quickly, keeping the audience engaged. I am now going to hand off the microphone to Amy DeWelker, my co-moderator. She will read the six questions that were submitted tonight in a similar fashion.
Thanks, Mike. I'm hearing great things from all of you tonight. I think it's really exciting to expand this conversation. So we had a lot of really good questions posed by the audience. It was very difficult to select only six more questions. There's so many good topics. So when we selected these six questions, we looked for topics that were themes in multiple questions, that, topics that have not been previously addressed, and/or topics that are Framingham-specific. So we're going to have pretty much the same format for the candidates, but we are running right on schedule, so we're going to give you all a minute instead of 45 seconds. You haven't heard these questions? I know, it's drastic, right? I mean, that would get us out of here about 8:35. I'm thinking out loud. Let's go with a minute. So each question is going to be randomly selected. I have them on cards right here. I don't know what I'm going to pick. So with that, I think the format is the same. Anyone have questions on that? We'll give the 15-minute second, 15-minute, 15-second warning. You guys are good? All right, will Group One please stand up? All right. So why don't we do reverse order from last time? So Caesar first, and then Novall. Here's the question, and feel free to take just a couple seconds to think about it in your mind. How would you support a citywide policy to eliminate plastic and expand composting and include all sites? So folks were interested in, like, apartments and businesses and restaurants.
So I think that the city council is responsible for setting the policy of the city. And to do an initiative like that, you know, one of the first things that we have to do is really invest in some public education. We need to reach out to everybody in different languages and talk them through the issue and what the benefit would be to them. But generally, you know, for the city council, I would support any policies that help make Framingham greener. We have to lead. The city council has responsibility and the ability to lead in making that happen for the city. And so if we do our job, we should be able to get to a greener Framingham and a place where we are contributing, our little community is contributing to this global crisis.
Thank you. Same question.
Same question. All right, well, I'm in the same vein as Caesar. We have to put our money where our mouth is, and we have to be the leaders in driving this train. And one of the things is to, in this arena, is just to incentivize people like that own apartments and that are not on the municipal garbage system. We have to just lead by example, and we have to incentivize and make it feel like that they have a skin in the game with us. This is all, it's all about partnership and collaboration, and that is one of the things that I, if I am elected as city councilor, I have the prerequisite skill set to do that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Group Two, will you please stand up? All right, so, yes, we'll start with Joe, and then Margaret, and then Tracy. All right, here is your question. Would you allocate funds to create public charging stations? And what's your selection criteria or some vision of where they would go?
Well, actually, I'm not sure that we need to allocate public funds for that. The planning board just approved charging stations at Shoppers World and at the movie theater, which are free to use any vehicle. It doesn't have to be a Tesla, it can be any electric vehicle. You can plug in, and the charging is paid for by advertising on that charging station. It's a creative solution like that that is a win-win for everybody. Yes, you have some pollution in, you're looking at an advertisement, but basically, you're providing power to electric vehicles throughout the community, and the cost is that you have to look at their advertising. that you have to look at their advertising as opposed to taking tax dollars to pay for people's electric vehicles, which I'm not sure that I'm totally in favor of powering everybody's vehicle. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I would, I know budget is true, a very challenged subject for me. But what the way I try to see the budget is first, what is our priority? Our priority in this case is to incentivize the people to go green, to get electric cars, and to do better for the environment. So I would approve, I would support, and I would propose.
Thank you.
Hi, I agree with Margaret. I too would support the city funding the rechargeable stations. I don't consider that paying for the cars because they're going to cost people also. I would have the location. I think we could put stations where they're most needed depending on where most people who have the cars are, but also create education and also try to help bargain with the makers of them to bring more, like incentivize to bring more electric cars, make it more affordable for our people. And then we could create more stations in more locations as we go, as needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Trace. Group 3. Now you're on equal footing. All right, your question is, what would you do to increase Framingham's tree canopy? Start with you, Ray.
First, you have to define tree canopy for me, because I can think of a few different things.
Tree canopy, how many trees there are basically in Framingham that contribute shading?
I...
It could be, it could be either like green space forests, or it could be trees planted along a street, like urban trees.
I support that whole adroitly. I mean, every project we do in the schools, when we pull out things and working with the planning board, with Christine, one of the requirements is always you have to put a new tree in. I mean, today, when people pass away, the cast of companies and stuff donating trees to the communities. So there are ways that there's no cost to the community of planting trees to make more, you know, safer environment for us. So I think I understand the question as my support in trees basically being planted around the community and canopy. So, yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I think this is another question of education, and I think it should start in our schools to make sure that the younger generations are bringing it up, and then we roll that out to the general population. And I think it's as simple as we make sure that people and residents understand the importance of what trees actually do for us. They provide oxygen for us to breathe. And I think that that's something that we need to do, and we need to have a focused, targeted effort to plant trees down our streets, to make sure that they're there, to make sure that there's a good reason if one needs to be removed, if it's diseased or something. But that it's not just kind of random and willy-nilly that we go through this process. So I think it's, education is the key, and I think we start right from the beginning with our younger generations and move on up.
Thank you. Okay, Group 4, will you please stand up? All right, so we'll start with Christine, then Adam, and then...
I want the last one.
Great. All right, this one's a little long, but bear with me. Recent road reconstruction projects have included bike lanes where space has permitted. Will you support a continued focus on making Framingham a bicycling-friendly city, including supporting the extension of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail from Sudbury into Knottscott?
Yes, yes, and yes. So as the chair of the planning board and a 12-year member of the planning board, we have instituted all of those things into all of our projects. And I want, all the last questions that you asked, we have been doing that. We have a tree planting process with developers to put canopy trees. Every 20 feet, there's got to be a tree. Every single development site, the front end of the building, bike lanes are incorporated on the site plans. So, yes, I would, yes, I would, yes, I would. So I think these are great questions. And, but the planning board's been heady or curved for a while. We have been doing electric charging stations for a while. We've got several solar plant, solar farms down by Odessa, up in Boaz Mountain, and we encourage developers to do all green. It's the highest level of platinum lead development that we can. So that would be my answer.
Great, thank you.
I absolutely agree with Christine. Bruce Freeman Trail, you know, I think I promised two years ago that that would be happening by the time my first term ended. So I'm a little embarrassed that we haven't done it already. But my understanding is that, you know, Sudbury is in the queue right now, and we need to be constantly pushing the state and working with CSX. So once Sudbury is going, that we are ready to extend that Bruce Freeman Trail. The other thing I'd like to see us do is, I think Bill talked about electric scooters. You know, I bike on the rail trails and walk on them. We should be having shared scooter programs and bike programs. I think about the e-bikes that Brandale Randolph's making. Those should be on there so that people can take them to one end, to the other, and recharge them there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So as of about a week and a half ago, me and my scooter are all about the bike lanes. You know, because, you know, our roads, some of our roads, they're, you don't really, you feel it in the car, you don't really feel it unless you're on two wheels and you hit some of these potholes. Crazy, hurt my neck. But no, yeah, bike lanes, definitely. And as far as the rail trail, absolutely. I work, actually, every day. I deliver to the two Chrysler buildings down by Home Depot. So right in that, if anybody's been on the intersection in the past six months, you know they're working on it, and they're working on that section of the walking trail. And it better be beautiful because they're spending a ton of money and a ton of time making it. So yes to the bike lanes, yes to the rail trails. Thank you.
Thank you. Group 5, will you please stand up? All right, let's... All right, we'll go, we'll go to each other, Amy.
Oh, you're going to sound scared of me?
Yeah, start with it.
That's fine.
All right, here we go. Gas leaks. There's 161 at least last count in the city. This is a real health problem and part of the fossil fuel infrastructure. What would you do to help fix this?
Well, you look at the tragedies they have in Lawrence and Anover and all these things that are going on. Framingham rips up roads as quick as we say hello, why? And they rip the road up, they put it back together, and they rip the same road up again. So I think Pw does a great job, but to try to get down Union Ave, we're killing these businesses. So, you know, we need to hold ever so many of these people accountable. We can't even hold ever so many accountable to remove double poles. So I don't know how we're going to make them accountable for the stuff under the ground. So it's something the city council needs to look at because the last thing we need is something to happen like in Lawrence. And now they've got another problem in Lawrence. So an ordinance, I think people don't like to name ordinances, but if the city council does their job right and passes ordinances, it holds people accountable, and then you all can measure us by those ordinances. But if we just sit there and talk and we're back and forth and don't collaborate, work with each other, and work at the mayor's office, we're going to have the same thing that's been going on for the last two years.
Thank you.
I agree with Phil. I think that holding the companies accountable for not much their mistakes, but, you know, things do happen. And when businesses and residences are affected by either their faulty equipment or their lack of, you know, being diligent on keeping, you know, keeping track of their equipment, I think that that would be, that would be key. So, you know, let's, if residences are going to be put out, you know, because, you know, things are happening or because of a third party, I think that third party should be held accountable, and the city needs to, you know, have that solution for the residency in Framingham.
Thank you.
161 lakes is 161 too many. We have the tools in town, the, between the council and the mayor, on street opening permits. We used to have a policy in Framingham that when a street opened, we wouldn't allow it to be reopened for a period of time, and we would notify the utilities, and they would have to do their repairs in advance. We need to get back to that. We need to increase our inspections. That's unacceptable. And we have to hold the utilities accountable. We have the resources to do this. They have to come to the city on an ongoing basis for permits. We don't, we need to learn, as Phil mentioned, from the Merrimack Valley. We can't have a situation like that. It's not only a health issue, it's a significant safety issue. And if we're lagging behind, we've got to hold their feet to the fire and do that. We did this in the last storm. Senator Spilker took and got the utilities to do more tree trimming and tree in advance, and we were not affected the same way as other communities in some of the storms. We've got to be proactive and use our bully pulpit and resources to get them to do what they should do.
Okay, and Group 6, the at-large candidates, yes. We'll start with George and work backwards. Janet, my Gloria. How will you support Farm Pond being a recreational hub for the community, including providing access with an ADA accessible dock?
That's a great question, and I just had, I was just involved in an event down there last Sunday afternoon on, that Eugene, sorry, just, yes, I want people to hear me. I was just involved in an event there last Sunday afternoon, talking to people about what, you know, jewel that is to have it right next to our downtown area. The biggest problem that we have with that is cost access because the downtown, well, two-thirds of it is cut off by the railroad. So if we have some way to access it by the railroad, I think it will make it a lot, a lot more accessible, a lot more enjoyable for people. So something I certainly expect to happen. I think a dock, accessible dock is a great idea. It's a really very nice boat launch down there by the old radio station. And it's too bad, I think it's got a lot more use in recent years than it had previously. But I think the biggest key to making it really part of our downtown is access somehow to the railroad area to that, because that really cuts so much of the important part of the dock.
Thank you.
So I think this is a great idea. My sister Karen Dempsey is the chair of the Disability Commission, and we had a Smiles Mask, which is a beach wheelchair organization, came out to learn at Pond in Framingham sometime in June, and they had a, she got to try it. It was a beach wheelchair, and my sister has not been on the beach, I think, since she could walk, I think she might have been around 10 or 11 years old. So we're opening up, we're opening up a world to people when we make things accessible. And Judy Grove worked for, it seemed like 50 years to get that skate park done, and it was amazing when it got done. And if we can collaborate with the different businesses, and if we can work with the Disability Commission and with advocates like Judy, the amount of things that we can do is really endless. We just have to work together. We have to get the people that have the ideas and be able to get things done. Thank you.
Thank you, Trace.
Coming from a city of Cambridge, Massachusetts, and we have community voting associations on our river, the Charles River, I think it's extremely important that we develop access to this. And as a city councilor, I would be adamant that we develop some sort of community voting association there, and that we, as a city, would take responsibility to give access to everybody. Being a healthcare administrator and supporting families and people with disabilities, it's extremely important that not only Farm Pond has access to everyone, but that all our municipal buildings and open spaces are accessible to everyone and their needs. Thank you.
Candidates, you have been amazing at staying on time. We really appreciate that. So we actually have enough time that each of you can have an additional 30 seconds. If there's something, I know we have not much time, but we'll give you a couple minutes to, or, you know, a minute to think. And if there's a question you heard that someone else answered and you want to speak to that, here's your chance. There's last words for, on this forum. Here's your chance, and we'll go in reverse order this time. So give you just a couple, you know, 30 seconds to think about it, and then we'll get started.
So I would, I also would like to add that the building on Mount Wait that we're building, and now they're requesting a TIF, I think that we should put mandates, if, I don't really want to give it, but if we have to give it, I think we should mandate that they build green and also that the workers be protected on that. In terms of the tree lining, we see the children complaining, I'm complaining every time I go down 135, the big building has gone up or is going up. Where are the trees? It's blocking the sun. So we definitely need to have, we definitely, the trees are just so paramount, especially in my district. Just now, we need more, we need the electric bikes that you can get to. That would be a huge environmental plus for our district to help make everything green. Thank you.
Thank you.
First, thank you for putting this forum together and for each of you for coming tonight. I welcome input and ideas. Please feel free to email me or to call me with ideas or thoughts. I'm always available and always interested. My name is John Stephanini. I'm running for District 8 Councilor. I appreciate your support. I'd just like to add one particular thing. A former colleague and friend, Chris Walsh, had a master plan he worked on with Luke Holton from the planning board to do a loop around Farm Pond. People should look it up. We should recap the landfill and make downtown part of that recreation center.
I just wanted to speak to the canopy. I think that I found out that there's a big correlation between the lack of canopy and the socioeconomic, you know, way that our neighborhood may be. And that is very evident in Framingham. You know, being from District 8, we have very little canopy in comparison to the north of Framingham. And, you know, the heat with the, you know, socioeconomic impact is just a big differential. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank you again for the opportunity to be here, and I never learned so much about from him since I run a campaign to be city council. And it is heartwarming. I think all we do is about love, love each other, love the place we live, and the connections that we are building. I think that's the fundamental thing in life. Thank you very much for listening to me.
I just want to say thanks to everyone for coming. This was a, kind of a wake-up call for me, anyway. You know, when we do the circuit like this, you know, we kind of, sometimes you kind of expected to walk into a room with more candidates than the audience, and I thought that would be the case tonight. But the fact that there's 50, 60 people here tonight, I think it really says something. I think there's a lot more people that care about this than what we think, and I think voices need to be heard. And so, thanks for coming. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Robert Case. I'm the candidate for District 5. I invite you to look at my website at bobcase.com for some more information. But I also wanted to say, as far as, I think we should do more with our bus system here in Framingham, and I think there are ways to incentivize large companies to have shuttle buses. But I think we, as a city council, need to pass a resolution to push our state delegation and our Beacon Hill representatives to do more to increase our busing here in Framingham. They're spending $11 million of the VW scandal money in the Pioneer Valley for electric buses, and we deserve some of that money here. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out and all the candidates for this really robust and important forum and discussion. I wanted to leave you guys with the fact that I probably am the only candidate here that rode my bicycle to this forum. I'm very serious about leading by example because that's everything I've always done in my adult life, and that's what we need to pass on to other residents, education, and to our children especially. So thank you very much for coming out, and don't run me over on the way out.
Thank you so much for having us this evening. This topic is really dear and close to my heart. It's really important for our next generation that we go green and we are responsible, not only as elected officials, but an entire community. This evening, I brought three posters to share with everyone, the life, the tree of our lives, the water... of our lives, the water cycle, and the endangered pollinators. This is part of what I stand for, is educating our community. This is very important that all of us understand, from that we are teaching our children why and what this means to go green. So please, let's educate each other and share. Thank you.
I too would like to thank everybody for coming tonight. It's really good to see this many people, and I agree that usually a lot of times there are more candidates than people in the audience. So you guys care, and it's quite obvious. If I do get elected, though, I will be an advocate, I will listen, I will be someone that is there, because I'm really, had an eye-opening since this, I got this invite for this forum. One of the things that is really concerning is how I feel like we've gone backwards in recycling, and that's my number one thing, and our new motto in When It Don't Throw It Out, I'm sorry, but that's moving backwards, we need to move forward. Thank you.
So as I said at the beginning, I hope to be able to learn some things from the audience, there's some definitely thought-provoking questions and some good ideas. One of the things that resonated with me is the question that was asked a couple before me about the gas leaks in town. I run a lot throughout this town, it's amazing how many places you've smelled gas when you're just, you know, for like a house or something like that, and it's really kind of frightening. So one thing the city council does do is we do give a lot of permits to NSTAR, EverSource, for whatever they're looking for, and a couple weeks ago, we sent them back to do some homework on one issue, this is another important issue, I think it's an issue we can bring up and do something about, and see what they have planned, is to resolve those issues. So thank you for bringing up that and other ideas, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening.
Yep, a lot of me, I just want to thank you for being here, just, I want to piggyback on what Tracy said. It's, we're on homework together, but it's not the Mount Wait project, it's the Fountain Street project that's looking for a tip, and I don't support it. I don't know if it'll be done before we get on city council or not, but if a developer makes a bad move, then he comes back to the city and looks for a million and a half bucks or whatever he's looking for, and they just had a tragic accident, okay, a guy fell 35 feet, wasn't tied to his harness, and a lot of stuff going on, and these, these job sites need to be regulated. But somebody comes back to the city of Framingham looking for a break after they go in, all in with their money, we don't have to subsidize developers, they got plenty of money.
The collective wisdom in this forum is really amazing. In education, we say that if you're the smartest person in the room, then you need to get a bigger room, and I think here, we've got people in Framingham who are amazing on this issue. Two things we didn't talk about, that I'll give five seconds to. One is the storm water burden that the state is putting on us that we need to address. We need to be providing rain barrels and subsidizing rain-friendly gardens for our homeowners. And the second thing is, we need to be standing up to the state and asking why they are investing billions of dollars to straighten the mass pipe for cars. Alternative forums should be driving this, not cars.
I again want to thank the organizers and all the candidates for participating in this discussion. I think it's really important that we do it, and the timing couldn't be better with all the news that we see. I just want to say that I, my heart is warmed by hearing all this support from all these people that want to be our councillors, but it's going to take a little more than support, it's going to take proposing the things to support. And so, from, with that, we're going to need feedback from the community, there's a lot of knowledge here, there's people that have cleaned up the rivers here, there's, there's support that we need from the community, a commitment as well, but I look forward to supporting you on the council.
Thank you. Once again, my name is Ricky Finley, and I'm a candidate for District Two councillor. I want to thank you all for coming out tonight. There's a few things that touched, we didn't touch upon tonight, and I think also is crucial. We talked about the sustainability coordinator, and we talked about putting a sustainability committee, which is very important to make this happen. One thing that we didn't talk is, we have to have, make sure that it's financed properly. A lot of times today, we have all these committees to do things, and I'll use the traffic road committee. We want them to do great things, but when we thought of it, we didn't think of giving them money to do it. So we need to give them money to do that, and I see I'm right, I had others, but thank you very much for letting me speak.
Once again, my name is Joe Morton, I'm running for city councillor at District One. When I started this off, I mentioned that I am not an expert in sustainability, and it's very clear that there's a lot of knowledge up here, and there's a lot of knowledge out here. I'm a listener, and I'm somebody that puts things together, puts people together, and that would be my goal in the city council, is to put things together and to try to, you know, create a green city here in Framingham.
So it's best for last. Christine Long, running for District One City Councillor. And to make public policy, which is one of the missions of the city council, the public input is the key essential ingredient in forming public policy. So one thing that is very critical these days has to do with public works and recycling. There have, there's a huge issue going on with recycling right now, because we need to educate our consumers or our users how to recycle, instead of our recycling becoming contaminated, being shipped to China, coming back, and we're paying for that. So that's public education. So, Christine.
All right, thank you, everyone. This has been a really, I think, enlightening discussion. I'm really excited to work with all of you. Please consider Sustainable Framingham to be a resource if you have questions or want a discussion, and Mike has one last thing to say before we wrap up.
Thank you, guys, for coming. This was wonderful. Bill, we hit 74, but you will knock 50 to 60. And if we, and if we, I think we could, we should, we're over 90, that's a damn good turnout for a Friday night. Thank you, guys.